Good afternoon, everyone. Happy Super Bowl Monday. The Senate Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs, please come to order. This is the 3 o'clock agenda. For those in the audience and those on Zoom, I apologize for the delayed start. We had some hearings that ran a little over, but thank you to the members for being here. Today's February 10th, 2025. We're in Conference Room 225. This hearing is also being streamed on the Hawaii State Senate's YouTube channel. A few housekeeping announcements in the unlikely case of technical failures. This meeting will reconvene here in Conference Room 225 at 3:00 PM on February 12th. For all testifiers, including those on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. If your oral testimony is different from your written testimony, the time limit for each testifier will be one minute. The content, including the hearing notice, copies of the bills, and testimony can be found on the legislature's website. If time permits, decision-making will occur after we hear from those offering testimony. First on our agenda is SB 1540. This is relating to building codes. Beginning January 1st, 2028, makes the most recent Hawaii state building codes adopted by the State Building Code Council supersede all existing county building codes and thereafter allows counties to remove requirements of the state building codes or add requirements to the state building codes only with prior council approval, repeals the county's authority to adopt, amend, and update the Hawaii state building codes for their respective county building codes. And first up on our list is Ted Kayaefis from Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in person. In support, Damian Vai Kaloa testifying for Yimby. In support, Kika Bukowski, IBW Local 1260.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Kika Bukowski, on behalf of IBW 1260. We want to offer comments in opposition, strong opposition to this measure as written. We did in our written testimony, offer up, propose amendments that we feel would make the bill more palatable. We have been in consultation with the Department of Accounting and General Services, as well as the State Director of Public Works and members of the Housing for the Governor's Office. But our biggest concern is that what the bill does, you know, minimum codes of standards is to create minimum codes and standards. What the bill does is it eliminates 107-28, which removes subsection 46-1.513, which specifically restricts counties from diminishing the intent of state law. And by doing that, it allows the counties to basically undermine or circumvent state building codes. And that's what this bill is doing. It allow, it could allow-
Thank you, Mr. Bukowski. We do have your testimony. Thank you. Councilmember Felicia Colton in support. That completes, that completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 1540. Anyone else that wishes to testify on this measure? Okay, if not, members, questions? Yeah, Senator Fukunaga. Sorry, we were on the council together for quite some time, so, so used to that. But I apologize, Senator.
Well, in the absence of someone from the county or from the county fire department, maybe if we could call upon IBW? Because, you know, I can appreciate the amendments that are being proposed by IBW. And I was wondering whether or not your organization has also had an opportunity to talk with, say, the fire department or, you know, some of the groups that are impacted by the various iterations of the city council's fire sprinkler ordinance, which, you know, has created all kinds of issues at the implementation level. And I understand that the last version of the, I guess, fire code update that was adopted in December works to try and at least retain those provisions of the fire sprinkler ordinance, which gives condo associations an alternative for fire safety improvements or fire sprinklers. So I don't know if your organization has talked to, you know, others on this issue, but with respect to the fire code, that is kind of a great area of concern.
So, so thank you for that question. Let me see if I can address your question. So we have been in consultation with building officials from other counties. We have been in consultation with other members of the State Building Code Council, voting members. This has been an ongoing discussion as far as the county's ability to amend building codes. And this, this bill as written would circumvent the general understanding of the State Building Code Council. In my previous capacity position, I attended every State Building Code Council meeting and am fairly familiar with the process. The, to this, as the bill, as written, the bill would allow the counties to disregard the state fire code, including the sprinkler code, if they so choose. And that's what one of our biggest concerns is. Our amendments allow, and we understand streamlining is important, and we support that. Our amendments allow the bill to be streamlined and not to be a double, a two-step process, but it also maintains the integrity of the minimum standards by requiring that amendments do not diminish or reduce the state minimums, but you can exceed the minimum standards, you just can't reduce it.
Okay, well, I think the, the real issue is going to arise within the next two years because the national standard for fire codes is now calling for mandatory retrofits, you know, for older buildings that were not, did not have fire sprinklers installed. So we are in this period where, you know, the latest state fire code amendments were modified somewhat by the council to incorporate what had previously been passed. So I hope that, you know, as these changes are occurring from the national to the state level and then to the counties, that we respect, you know, those efforts to take care of buildings that were caught in this kind of conundrum as they try and move their way forward.
Our understanding of the bill as written is that it would allow the counties to basically repeal and circumvent all of the codes listed in 107-25 if they so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Just have a follow-up for you, Mr. Bukowski. Is your understanding that the State Building Code Council is currently suspended because of the emergency proclamation?
That's our understanding, and we feel that that has caused considerable amount of chaos within the industry, which is why we understand the first part of this bill, I think, calls for by 2028, for all the codes to be consistent, which I think is, is needed to kind of bring everybody back in line because of the way the 107 is written, it adopts codes automatically as they're published, and then it creates two-year timelines for the state as well as the counties. Otherwise, if nothing is done, they actually become state law. So it's impacting the counties, and it's creating, the suspension of the State Building Code Council is creating a tremendous amount of confusion in the industry, the design, the design community, as well as the construction community and the trade unions, because their licensing is based on the published codes and standards.
Thank you.
Yep.
Members, any other questions? If not, thank you. Okay, any other questions on SB 1540, members? If not, we'll move on to our next item, which is SB 626. This is relating to disaster preparedness. Prohibits the planting of large trees along evacuation routes requires the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency to identify large trees along evacuation routes and trim spray or remove large trees having the potential to obstruct an evacuation route. Defines evacuation route and appropriates money. First on our list is Leah Lermi, Climate Change Coordinator, offering comments. Heather McMillan, Chairperson for DLR. In person of DLR? Yes.
Hello, Heather McMillan, for DLR. And we can't offer your comments to answer the questions of the public.
Okay, no, we got your testimony. Thank you. DLR offering comments. James Barrows from Haime, Administrator in opposition. Anyone from Haime? Okay, and then last is Karen Kamkowicz in opposition. That completes our list of registered testifiers. Anyone else on SB 626? If not, members, questions? Move on to our last item on this agenda, which is SB 692. This is relating to spray paint. Regulates the retail and wholesale sales of spray paint, designates the Department of Law Enforcement with jurisdiction. The only person registered to testify on SB 692 is Tina Yamaki from the Retail Merchants of Hawaii on Zoom in opposition.
Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. I'm Tina Yamaki with the Retail Merchants of Hawaii, and yes, we are strongly opposed to this measure. It does have a strong burden to retailers. You know, it's going to cost a lot for the small retailers. It's going to be very burdensome for them to lock up everything. And also too, we have a concern with all of the information that we have to take, especially with regards to identity theft. You do have our testimony, and it'll be available if you have any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to testify on SB 692? If not, members, questions? Okay, Ms. Nip, are you here to testify on SB 692? No? Okay. Is Ms. Yamaki, are you still available on Zoom on this measure?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. And so in doing some research, I know there was a previous measure that related to this and banning that, and I know there was a lot of opposition with the reporting requirement. So from the retail merchant standpoint, is the issue mostly the ability to have to record and report sales and purchases as relates to spray paint?
Both. So for a lot of retailers, they would have to probably build cabinets and things like that to put the spray paints in, to lock them up, or even those plastic cases you guys see spam in. Those are all very, very expensive, and it's going to be a huge cost to retailers, where large retailers can buy them in bulk, small mom and pop, local stores are unable to, and this might fold them. It's not going to discourage people from spray painting. You know, they still can get it off the black market and everything. I think the focus, instead of penalizing retailers and the customers, is to go after the taggers themselves and make it, you know, deter them from doing that with higher penalties and higher fines.
Thank you, Ms. Yamaki. Members, any other questions? If not, I'm ready to roll into decision-making. We're ready. This is for our 3 o'clock agenda. First up on our list is SB 1540. Members, I'd like to recommend if we're going to defer this measure, I think, with the suspension of the State Building Code Council, we do need some time to relook this. So we're going to defer SB 1540 indefinitely. Next up is SB 626. This is relating to disaster preparedness. I want to thank the introducer for introducing this. I think there needs to be more coordination with DLT and Haime, and seeing Haime's testimony in opposition, we're going to defer this measure. And last up on our agenda is SB 692 relating to spray paint. Being that there was only one testimony in opposition, recommendation here is to defer. That completes our 3 o'clock agenda. We're adjourned. Good afternoon, everyone. Will the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs, please come to order? This is the, this is February 10th, 2025. We're in Conference Room 225. This is a decision-making on a measure previously considered. This is, this is in relation to SB 999. No public testimony will be accepted. This is relating to fireworks. Repeals all permissible uses of consumer fireworks and makes conforming amendments to the fireworks control law. Establishes civil penalties for the use and sale of consumer fireworks, including nuisance abatement, proceedings, and forfeiture of assets using the commission of illegal use or sale of consumer fireworks. Establishes the fireworks forfeiture special fund to deposit asset forfeiture proceeds and to provide for community safety education programs. This was a joint referral with the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. A recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments. There is a long list of amendments, so let me just bear with me, members, and to the public. First, we're going to remove Section 2 of the measure. HRS 132D-5 subsection 6 is no longer being repealed. For 132D-5 subsection B, we're going to remove the added word "use" and restore the statutory language more than five calendar days before the time periods for permissible use under section 132D-3. We're going to remove section 4 of the measure, remove section 6 of the measure, remove section 7 of the measure. Under HRS 132D-14A6B, change $500 to $1,000. Under HRS 132D-14B, change $500 to $1,000. Under HRS section 132D-14 subsection C1, change 25% to 50% and change 80% to 50%. Under HRS section 132D-14 subsection C2, change the reference to the fireworks forfeiture special fund to the general fund and change the percentage of the forfeiture assets going into the general fund to 100%. Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, members. I want to go back to, under HRS section 132D-14C1, change 20% to 50%, not 25. Again, let's change 20% to 50%. And then we're going to accept Attorney General's proposed amendment to 132D-14A subsection 6C provided under testimony. We're going to remove section 15 of the measure. We're going to add a section appropriating a blank amount of the general revenues for fiscal years 2025 to 2026 and 2026 to 2027 to provide for community safety education programs to be expended by the Department of Law Enforcement. We're going to change the effective date to July 1st, 2077, and any technical and conforming amendments as needed. With that, members, any further discussion? Okay? If not, recommendations to pass SB 999 with amendments. Vice Chair, Chair votes aye.
Aye vote, yes. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rose?
Aye.
Senator Decort?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chair. That completes our deferred agenda at 3:15. We're adjourned.
Good afternoon. We're convening the Joint Committees on Transportation and Culture and the Arts and Public Safety and Military Affairs on our 3:15 PM agenda here in State Capitol Conference Room 225. We have a number of bills on the agenda, and in the event that we get cut off, we'll be deferring these to...
Go first, sorry.
When do we get to 3:02 PM?
Oh. We have due tomorrow at 3:02.
Tomorrow at 3:02 PM.
In room 224.
In room 224. Okay, thank you. That said, I will be asking folks to keep their testimony to two minutes to make sure there's time to get through everybody. And with that, up first is Senate Bill 971 relating to traffic. And testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chair, Chair, Vice Chair, Members, and Mr. Deportivo UG San.
Thank you. Hawaii Police Department in opposition. Officer of the Public Defender.
Good afternoon, Chair Elefante, Chair Lee. Sunny Ganin, Deputy Public Defender. The department is standing against this measure in addition to what has been noted in our testimony. Just like to discuss briefly what is happening right now in the district courts regarding the new charge of a possible C felony for individuals who have three or more charges of driving without a license. Driving without a license is the most common charge in the state of Hawaii. After July of 2024, it has become a C felony. So that is, individuals could face up to five years and a $10,000 fine. We are seeing that numerous individuals are being held in pre-trial incarceration and are clogging up the courts. So for that reason, because there's already a real big impetus for people to get their driver's license, we don't believe that this bill is necessary. There's kind of a joke going on in the Public Defender's office where we tell people, you know, what are you in for? You don't want to see a drive without a license.
Thank you. Further testimony from Shobo in opposition and late testimony from... Yeah, one individual in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, are there any questions? If not, all right, thank you. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1102 relating to the Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Unit. Testifying first is the Department of Transportation.
Hello, Chairs and Members. It's Niffen of Hawaii DOT. We sent in our testimony and comments. I'm going to change it to support. We support the measure. This is a really important position that should be appointed by the director, and we have no concerns about the three for your terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Further testimony from the Hawaii Firefighters Association online. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Elefante. My name is Celeste Nip, representing the Hawaii Firefighters Association. We are in strong opposition to this bill. There are no other fire chiefs who have these term limits that are in the charters or the ordinances of the counties. We also understand the information and we also, we understand the complexity of the duties of the fire chief of the airports, which is pretty enormous. We would request that the bill be held in committee. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them or try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, if not, other questions? All right, seeing none. Let me turn it over to the Chair from PSL. Okay, thank you so much, Chair Lee. Next up on our agenda is SB 141. This is relating to emergency management. Establishes the 8th day of August of each year as Hawaii's Disaster Drill Day, requires the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency in coordination with all state departments and agencies to conduct drills and perform other activities for that day. First up on our list is from Haime Administrator James Barrows in support. And Marie Samudoo in support? Oh, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name. Yes, please come forward. Aloha and welcome, if you can state your name for the record.
Marie Samudio. I too strongly support this. I've been involved in emergency preparedness for a number of years, and I was glad to hear that Haime did support it. And I think I'm here primarily to address you and try to find out from you what the other agencies, how much they're involved in it. This is a tremendous undertaking. There's been information on the news recently about how in Taiwan and Japan, this is a regular event, but the culture of Hawaii is not so much concerned about this type of thing. If we have anybody here, excuse my ignorance, anybody from Big Island? Hey, Senator? You have probably the most active and well-organized group that could handle this type of thing. Kauai might be second, okay, but we're kind of behind. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it. Okay, so I do-
Thank you so much.
Support.
Thank you. That completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 141. Anyone else that wishes to testify on this measure? If not, members, questions? Okay, move on to our last item on our agenda, which is SB 1570 relating to emergency management. Requires the governor to declare state of emergency and use the emergency powers if air transportation service is unavailable or foreseeable unavailable to and from the island of Molokai or Lanai for longer than 24 hours. Requires the Department of Transportation to plan and design an expansion of the runway at Molokai Airport to accommodate larger aircraft and appropriate monies. First on Zoom, Deputy Attorney General Inouye. Oh, here, yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Attorney General Brenton Inouye. We're here to provide some comments on the bill. We suggest deleting Section 2 because it may interfere with the separation of powers clause, separation of powers doctrine, because it infringes on the governor's authority to exercise his emergency powers, which is his sole authority. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you so much. From Director Budget and Finance Luis Solavera, offering comments. From Haime, James Barrows Administrator, offering comments. Director Ed Sniffen.
Senator testimony supporting again.
Okay, yes, we do have that. Okay, HDOT supporting the attempt with comments. Okay, thank you. Kimberly Sevton testifying for Molokai Drugs. Yes, hi, welcome.
Aloha, my name is Kimberly Svetin, a Molokai native who returned home from Seattle to manage our family-owned pharmacy. Last month, I had a five-plus hour one-way commute from Oahu to Molokai. I was stuck in Honolulu when our island's only air carrier, Molokai, Mokulele Air, shut itself down for over five days on January 15th, 2025. I am thankful I didn't get sick like one of the passengers on my boat ride. I feel so bad for our children getting chemo, kupuna seeing doctors and dentists on Oahu, medical appointments made months ago being canceled, and having insurance companies cancel flights for their Quest patients. Last week, the reservation for our Oahu-based foot doctor who sees over 70 patients a month was canceled. The ticket for the Honolulu orthodontist who flies in once a month was also canceled. She sees at least 30 people per month. As the president of Molokai Drugs, I see firsthand the stress and anxiety that having only one true option to leave and return to Molokai provides. This is a life and death crisis.
Thank you so much. And we do have your written testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Siana Austin-Hunt in support. Lori Lay Rollins Corvello in support. Walter Reedie offering comments. Alexa Dudoy in support on Zoom.
Can we start?
Yes, you may.
Aloha, aloha. My name is Alexa Duduwa Pontemsky, and I am in support of SB 1570. We have encountered many, many examples of our only airline to Molokai with delays, cancellations, change of flight schedules. We need some kind of our emergency backup system for our island. There's just too many situations medically and with personal business trips to off-island that we are unable to, to reach. I am requesting that we support this bill, and I pray, and I hope that you guys may start thinking about Molokai people, that if you were in our situation, you would really have a difficult time functioning in society.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up is Rob Stevenson in support on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Don Beal on Zoom.
Also not present on Zoom, Chair.
How about Rosie Davis?
Also not present on Zoom. She's present on Zoom.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Rosie, please proceed, if you can identify yourself for the record.
Okay, aloha. My name is Rosie Davis. I'm the director, executive director of Maui County Ahit. We provide recruitment and training for medical professionals, dentists, physicians. We've had a hard time retaining them here. My youngest daughter is in med school and plans to come back to Molokai. I was there for the day of opening ledge. She didn't get a notice from Mokulele. I ended up chartering a flight for eight people on Kamaka Air to come, to come home. On that flight was a woman that had just had a hysterectomy the day before. It was painful to see her try and get on the plane. I heard the Attorney General make a comment about part of this bill. I'd like to ask him a question. What is the solution for us here? I'm not sure really who to reach out to anymore, even with the congressional delegation that we reached out to recently. We really need you folks to support this bill and not to change it. I appreciate your time. Aloha.
Thank you, Rosie. We have Iolani Kohoa in support, April P. Alani Agostero in support, John Pele in support, Denise Kawano in support, Rochelle Castro in support, David Mikami in support, Veronica Moore in support, Judith Mikami, Stephanie Smith, Annette Cord, all in support, Alan Louis in support, and Dr. Leilani Kaanehe. Alan Louis in support and Dr. Leilani Kaanehe in support. That completes our list of registered testifiers on Senate Bill fifteen seventy. Anyone else that wishes to testify in this measure? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Marie Samudio, I would like to support this bill as well. A couple of weeks ago, when the airlines weren't flying, a friend of mine, grandson, had a life threatening injury and they had to jump through hoops to get a water transport to Maui and then to Oahu for treatment. So definitely improvements seem to be made, thank you.
Thank you so much, Marie. Anyone else on S B fifteen seventy? Not members, questions?
I have a question. I have a question.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ed Sniffen, please, D O T. With regards of the improvements or new runway and expansion on Molokai, we've done expansions throughout the other airports, including my island, both Kona and Hilo. And B N F also suggests that we could use the special funds or the airport revenue bond fund. In, and I know you inherited the airports division in your new role as Director of D O T, but looking at Molokai, has there been any interest previously or some time ago studying the the addition of improvements to a runway? And perhaps have you considered looking at, you know, an extension for Molokai? And I understand also considering for Lanai as well. Where are you in?
For Lanai, there was a consideration for expansion or extension of the runway by five hundred feet. That was going to be paid for by Pulama Lanai. When they looked at the the extension and the potential increase in airline traffic with the thirty five million dollar price tag for the five hundred foot extension, they found it infeasible. So they're not going to move forward on that.
That was some time ago though, right?
Yeah.
That recommendation, okay, for Molokai.
For Molokai, there was a, there was an effort to look at an extension in the past. And I don't know, remember when, I wasn't part of airports at the time. And the discussion was to get larger planes into Molokai Airport. There would be an extension necessary of fifteen hundred feet and a widening of the runway by fifty feet. At the time, the consideration, the cost was about sixty to seventy million. Given where the pricing was for Lanai, we're looking at that cost to be about a hundred million dollars. That hundred million cannot come from federal, a federal government because it's a rural airport. It's, it doesn't qualify for its usage in that area. So it would have to be by state funding, some kind of state funding, whether it's airports or a general fund. In the past, when this effort went through, Molokai community was against the widening and extension of that runway. So we'd have to go through the effort again.
Because they were, part of the argument was because of the larger aircrafts, right?
Definitely, larger aircraft, more, potentially more people coming in. Also, if we extend the runway and increase the capacity in that area, we'd have to put in TSA requirements now. So at that airport and anybody going into that airport has to be cleared through security, which is a totally different operation. So those were, all those things considered, at the time, it was considered not feasible. If this is to move forward, we're looking at trying to find out where that funding would come from, how we would partner with TSA to be ready to service at the time that this would be done. If you go to the environmental, design, planning and permitting, it's going to take about seven to eight years. So construction of this, we're looking at ten to eleven years from now.
Okay, is the request for extension due to the current type of aircrafts that already flying into Molokai?
That's correct.
Okay, so what's the issue with that? Because your proposal or your, the consideration previously was only on the heavy body or the larger aircrafts. So what about an extension to the existing aircrafts that are being used now? Can we extend the runway?
For the existing aircrafts, there wouldn't need to be an extension. They can, they can operate with the runway as it is.
I see, I see.
So in the past, when we were considering that upgrade, it's because the airlines had considered maybe we'll look at the market to try and see, because that's only where the airport, the airports could fund it, is if the airlines were jumping into that market. When we asked them on the last several years whether or not they'd be interested in that area or if they could service in emergency situations, there was no willingness at this time. So it's very difficult for us to to support the extension at this time.
Understanding, because the history for aircrafts flying into Molokai has always been the the smaller aircrafts that's dated back years, including Aloha Airlines and their dash sevens and, okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Chairs, thank you, Ed.
Members, any other questions?
Director, I have a question for you. So is H Dot working on a contract with an emergency charter, you know, to help the residents of Molokai? Can you elaborate on any of that?
We're going through a procurement now, we're setting up the procurement to ensure that we can set up a charter that we can use during emergency situations. We don't have any contracting, we don't have any contract that's available right now to us to be able to send that charter out in emergency situations. So what we're proposing and what we're moving forward on for procurement is chartering a service that can be used for, by state agencies in emergency situations within twenty four hours of the emergency. In order for that charter to be available within twenty four hours, when we speak to the four different charter services that would be interested in something like this, very difficult for them to just be available, unless we had some kind of open end contract with them. So the intent is for us to get an open ended contract that will allow state agencies and legislative body to use that chartered service in in times when operations don't allow you to go commercial. Us, you guys have night meetings on different islands that make it very difficult to come back on the last flight. In those situations, we would use that charter service for those types of of travel with the intent that the agencies would reimburse that that contract. So we're not giving anybody a fair, I mean, a free ride. They'll reimburse it because we don't want this to be a replacement of the commercial operations that are out there right now. But given, given that we would give them a minimum, a number of flights we would use per month, they can make that service available to us in a twenty four hours notice to ensure that if something like this happens again, if there's a shutdown of operations of 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 commercial flights again, we can push that charter out and make sure that we can prioritize the the highest need. Definitely medical cases, medical providers, those that have to get to to the different doctor's appointments, those types of things.
Thank you, Director. Members, any other questions?
One, one more question. With regards to essential services, when the contract went out for Molokai and Waimea as well, now that's all federally controlled and they are the ones that make the decisions on that contract services. Now with Molokai, there was a competition this past, what, couple of years or recently for essential services, which is also being serviced by Mokulele, I understand. So there is a, another company that competed. Do you know what, well, what I'm trying to to gather is if we lobby Congress instead of limiting one essential service for contract services, though they're provided by by funds on drafts, I mean, on grants, but if we, if we extend services, let's say if someone wants to go in like the opponent of the, that didn't get the contract in this last bid, does that aircraft, they can't fly at all into Molokai?
No, so the way E A S works is if, so let me back up.
Yes.
There was no E A S competition for Molokai because there was already commercial services scheduled in those areas. The only E A S.
By the two or one?
Only one.
Okay.
Only Mokulele. But the E A S was available for Lanai because there was no scheduled service there. So the E A S was competed and won by Mokulele for, to service Lanai. Because Mokulele already had scheduled air service for Molokai, Molokai was not, not eligible for an E A S. So in that area, Mokulele is just serving as a commercial air provider. That being said, we have Pacific Air.
Just to back up, so they don't have the essential services for Molokai?
Not for Molokai.
Oh, that's interesting, did they just change that rule?
No, they've, they've not had it.
It was always only Lanai and Waimea?
Yeah, they've not had it for Molokai.
Okay.
So for Molokai, there's another service provider that's coming in, Pacific Air Charters, I believe it is.
That's the one I was trying to reference, there's another company.
So, but, so they're already going through the process with FAA to get their certifications to service Molokai. That, that certification process can take up to two years going through with FAA, but our congressional delegation and Governor Green and and members of this legislature have been working with FAA to expedite as much as possible. Pacific Air Charters was looking at servicing multiple islands, but they're going to put in their their certification for Molokai first, so that can go fast. Once they get that, they can start servicing, and they're already training their pilots now to make sure everything's set.
So are you saying that there will be soon an approval for Pacific Air to to provide the services?
Yes.
Including Molokai?
Yes. And I would say, I cannot give a timeframe because FAA doesn't give us timeframes, but we're hopeful that within the next twelve months, they can get certified.
All right, thank you, thank you, Chairs.
You're welcome. Members, any other questions for Director Sniffen? Okay, if not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sniffen. I'll turn it back to you, Co-Chair Lee.
Thank you. Heading into the decision making on our three fifteen P M agenda with the Joint Transportation, Culture and Arts and Public Safety Military Affairs Committees. First is Senate Bill nine seven one relating to traffic. Recognize there are some issues that need to be addressed here, which the stakeholders and testifiers have raised. Would like a chance to actually chat with folks as we move forward, the various stakeholders, and see if there isn't something we can do, because obviously this is a longstanding and ongoing issue. We know we're not going to solve it all today, so for the moment, we'd like to move it forward with a defective date and see if we have time we can buy to get folks together in the same room and and work this out. So recommendation is going to be to move this on to the Judiciary Committee with a defective date. See if we can do anything there. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation to pass S B nine seven one with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha. Senator Decort.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs, same recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair for the vote.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rose.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, moving on to Senate Bill one one zero two relating to the aircraft rescue firefighting unit. Similarly, I, this is the first time, I think, at least our committee in recent memory has dealt with this issue. Recognize there are some issues here, but similarly, I'd like to get folks together to actually talk about this because we haven't had that opportunity, particularly with labor. But for the moment, I'd like to move this on simply because we're on a deadline here. So adding in a defective date and then also adding a language to sort of get the conversation going and see if this might be amenable to folks to allow the position in question in the bill to be selected from a list of three nominations. See if we can just encourage some discussion here as it moves along. So that being said, your recommendation to pass with amendments, those recommendations. Then we'll get folks together and maybe circle back with committee members also.
Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask the D O T one question? Or just short?
Sure.
Okay. This is interesting. We, do we have a position currently as a chief?
Here is a fire chief position right now.
Okay, and if I remember, that's an exempt position.
It's not an exempt position.
Is it a civil service position?
Civil service position.
So what civil service position, there is an existing chief, but we're limiting a position on this measure?
So the way I would, I would move this forward, if if it's the body's will and this bill passes, I would set an exempt position to be the chief for the, for the arc operations.
I can see the exemption, I mean, however, but this is a collective bargaining issue, no?
No.
Because you're saying that it's a civil service position on the present chief.
The current, the current position is a.
So what you're going to do then?
Yeah, the current position is a civil service position. That position would be subservient to the exempt position that we have put in place. So we would change duties, we would not really remove any any positions in that area.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If not.
Okay, all right.
Vice Chair.
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation on S B eleven oh two is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes with reservations, Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Okay, Senator Decort.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, same recommendation for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs to pass with amendments on S B eleven oh two. Chair votes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rose.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, let me turn it over to the Chair from P S L.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is S B one four one, this is relating to emergency management. We're going to recommend that we pass this with amendments. We're going to change the effective date to July first, twenty twenty five, and any technical amendments. Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair, Chair votes aye with amendments.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rose.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Lee on transportation, same recommendation.
Okay, the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation to pass S B one four one with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, and our last item on our agenda is S B fifteen seventy, this is relating to emergency management. First of all, I want to thank the Department of Transportation for submitting the written comments and it sounds like D O T is working on stuff. However, to keep the conversation going, we're going to pass this, recommendations to pass with amendments. We're going to accept the A G's recommended changes as contained in their written testimony. Any technical amendments and defective date to July first, twenty seventy seven. Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair, Chair votes aye with amendments.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rose.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
C C A Committee, same recommendation.
Okay, Chair's recommendation for the Committee on Transportation and the Culture and the Arts on S B fifteen seven is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha. Senator Decort.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.